Recording in progress.
Good morning. I will now call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. For the record, it is my final meeting as Chair. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Gallagher?
Here.
Supervisor Cottrell?
Here.
Supervisor Pedrosa?
Here.
Supervisor Gregory?
Here.
Chair Ramos?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to do pet. So this morning, you'll see, I was joined in the beginning because I couldn't let go of this little, little love, and this is Cohen. And I'm going to invite Katie to join us with a few others. So as you know, this was a new segment that we had Pet of the Week, and this is our last board meeting of the year. So we have invited three of our little furry friends from the animal shelter. And I'm going to turn it over to Katie, our animal shelter manager, to tell us a little bit about everyone.
Good morning. So I believe you guys might have seen some of our social media posts where we've been doing a campaign where we're partnering with the agencies. Different agencies are the Napa Sheriff's Department, the Napa Police Department, the firefighters of both city and county, and also a lot of others. The district attorneys are in there. We've got some emergency services such as like EMR, AMR. They've all partnered with us. So I figured who would be a better guest today than our own local animal services officers? Today I do have Senior Animal Services Officer Clark here with Buffy. Buffy is a three-year-old pit mix. She's a spayed female. She was found within county unincorporated area of Napa. She came in as a stray, and she has been an absolute love and a volunteer favorite, staff favorite, while she's been at the shelter. So that's Buffy. I also have Animal Services Officer Sager here, and he has Buster with him. Buster was found in American Canyon as a stray as well. He has been absolute a gem in the shelter. He's very sweet and loving. He loves his treats, but he is awesome. So he's around a year old, also a neutered male. And then Belia is holding Cohen. Cohen is nine weeks old, a domestic shorthaired. He was found in Napa City Limits, and he was actually fostered. A lot of people ask, especially during this time of the year, how can you support the animal shelter? We obviously are grateful for any monetary donations, but also the biggest ways that you can help the shelter is either by volunteering, whether that's coming and socializing the animals or walking the dogs. Or in this case, he was fostered from a very tiny, young bottle-baby kitten. And so they were able to provide, obviously, the love and care to get him to where he is now, to where he's available for adoption. So that is one awesome way that you can help support the local animal shelter. Thank you so much.
Excellent. And thank you to our animal services officers for what you do. You not only support our animals, you support our community from safety situations, but also making sure that these adoptable animals can make their way to forever home. So thank you so much for being here. And I am going to hand over Cohen, as much as I don't want to. I will hand over Cohen. And as a reminder, right now, we are waiving all fees for adoption if you come in and you adopt one of these animals. So thank you all so much for being here. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next item, I'm going to take this from a different position here just to really speak to my colleagues and mark this occasion. When we have the retirement of one of our department heads, it is truly a bittersweet moment. We have the retirement of Janet Notley. We all knew it was coming, our Director of Child Support Services. And today I want to take this moment to really celebrate Janet's accomplishments. They have been plentiful, not just in Napa County, but overall in the space of child support services during a time when we know that the state was looking to regionalization and making efficiencies throughout the system. Janet was a superstar and a leader in this space. We have double-dipped with Janet as an attorney, also appearing in court on behalf of children to make sure that they are supported within the community. And we know that when we have the most vulnerable in our community supported, everyone is uplifted. So if I can say, before I begin some of these recitals and invite Janet to join me, Janet's service to the County of Napa has been one of uplifting our children and our families. And for that, we are incredibly grateful, Janet, for your service. So I'm not going to read all of the recitals, as it is very long, and, you know, we add a lot of whereas's as politicians, but I'm going to take some note, lawyers. So I'm going to take some noteworthy ones to really just give a story of Janet and her service to the County of Napa and her public service overall. Janet S. Notley, whereas Janet S. Notley has devoted her life's work to improving the lives of others. After an esteemed 27-year career in public service, she will retire from her current role as Director of Napa County Child Support Services on December 30th, 2023. And whereas Janet was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to serve and represent the county as the Director of Child Support Services on February 2nd, 2008, which precedes all of us. Whereas, under Janet's leadership, Napa County has been recognized as a top 10 performing local child support agency in the state, won the Innovation Award for its customer-focused case management, and for being number one in the state for the shortest time from case opening to first payment issued. And whereas among countless challenges faced during her tenure, Janet has overseen the reorganization of the Department of Child Support Services through years of decreasing personnel and budget while increasing the total support dollars distributed to families. From February 2008 to December 2023, the department has collected $161,524,628 in support of Napa County youth. Whereas our Director of Child Support Services, Janet has contributed positively to the well-being of children and the self-sufficiency of families in Napa County through her service, mentorship, and leadership over the years. Additionally, Janet has organized and led community-based holiday giving culminating in hundreds of children, parents, seniors, and unhoused individuals receiving gifts and food for the holidays. Whereas Janet has maintained active involvement and held leadership roles on a number of state and local boards, commissions, and associations throughout her time with Napa County. Whereas, above and beyond all professional accolades, civic, and philanthropic undertakings and accomplishments, Janet is credited for the commendable human traits of having ethics and integrity, being compassionate and kind, and being committed in ways that embody the very best in public service. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors of the County of Napa, State of California, on this 19th day of December, does hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Janet Notley on her retirement from a distinguished career in public service and for her dedicated service to Napa County.
I will present this proclamation, and in a minute, I'll invite my colleagues to join me. But Janet, if you would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Brian, all I can say is it's been a great ride. It's, sometimes it feels like 25 years, and other times it feels like two. I have been honored to work for Napa County. It is a wonderful county to work for. It's a wonderful county to live in. And I have been privileged to work with a great group of people in my department. They are all hard-working people, as you can tell by the amount of money that we collected. Even more importantly than the money that we collected throughout the year, some of my favorite stories are not about the dollars, but it's about the parents who decide to participate with their children once we determine that they are the father of those children and that they start paying child support. One of my favorites was we did a "Please Thank the Parent Who Pays Child Support" from the payees and their children. And I had a letter from a little boy who said, "I've never met you, Dad, but I want to thank you because Mom doesn't have to work a second job anymore, and she gets to spend more time with me." Still works me up when I hear it. The father responded and asked for contact information for the mother and the little boy, because we're not under confidentiality. We can't share it unless they release it. And he called me back a year later and let me know that he had met his child, and he now had visitation with his child. That little boy's life was changed completely. So it was much more than the dollar, though those dollars are really important to our families of Napa. So I just want to say thank you to all the department heads that I've worked with, obviously to my staff, all of the staff at the county. They've all been wonderful. I would say I will miss you, but my guess is I'll be getting my three minutes up here periodically at the Tuesday meetings, so I'll be seeing you all. And I'm looking forward to having more time to join some more of the nonprofits and other things going on in our county that's so important. So thank you all.
Thank you, and again, to our Director, Janet Notley, and congratulations on the occasion of your retirement. Thank you for leaving your department better than how you found it. Next, we will take up our consent items for special districts. This is 5A through C. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open public comment on 5A through C. None in the boardroom? Any on the phone lines? No one? I will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Pedrosa, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will take up our regular board items under consent, and this is, these are items 6A through AG. We have a correction memo on 6F. We are pulling item 6H. Do I have that correct? Excellent. At this time, I will ask if there are any questions from the board on the remainder of the items. This would be excluding 6H. It incorporates 6F with the correction memo. Seeing none, I will open public comment in the boardroom. Seeing no public comment, I'll turn to the phone lines. I will close public comment as there is none. I have a motion by Supervisor Pedrosa for the balanced approval of all consent items A through AG excluding H.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cottrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will take public comment. Public comment is for all matters, not listed on the agenda, but within the board's jurisdiction. Public comment is open for three minutes at the podium.
Haven't been up here since this is moved. Good morning. Michelle Benvenuto-Wingers of Napa County. So recently, the Planning Commission followed in the board's footsteps in scrutinizing a proposed agricultural use on an agriculturally-zoned parcel due to neighbor complaints and concerns about a public road, despite the Director of Public Works and the Fire Marshal deeming the road safe and recommending approval. Wingers remains deeply concerned with the growing threat to agricultural use. We observe a troubling trend where emotional appeals and anecdotal evidence often overshadow solid empirical evidence. This issue extends beyond the denial of winery and vineyard projects. It reflects a persistent lack of support from the board and its planning commissioners for their own staff. We acknowledge the importance of asking questions, but when those questions are answered by experts or grounded in reliable data, scientific research, and established best management practices, it becomes disheartening. While we've been told that our concerns are unfounded or unwarranted, we will continue to raise the red flag. Our commitment is fueled not only by the uncertainty placed on applicants, but also by the broader risk. When agriculture is restricted, or more recently outright denied, in agriculturally-zoned areas, Napa risks losing local control. Past Napa County leaders recognize this and record to limit our RENA numbers based on agricultural zoning. If that perception that the zoning is a mere charade, we absolutely risk intervention by the state. And recent statewide housing regulation strips away local control. It's imperative to maintain the integrity of agricultural zoning throughout Napa County and recognize that the actions of this board could potentially erode our community's distinctive character and jeopardize our rich agricultural heritage. Continuing to advocate for policies that preserve our unique identity is not just a preference, but a necessity for the prosperity and longevity of our entire community. Thank you.
Good morning. Jim Hinton, 45 Spring Street, Napa. Well, it's almost Christmas time, and I'm hearing a lot of wonderful rumors circulating through the community. I understand that the FBI is here, and they're starting to do a probe into corruption inside the county, which I just think is wonderful news. I look forward to the day when we see certain people getting arrested for their unruly behavior and we get some justice that we've long been waiting for. At the last meeting, and I even understand that, you know, certain department heads might have been subpoenaed and so forth, and getting ready to address the FBI over this stuff, and it's, I just hope it's open to the public for us to watch, because I'll be in the front row with my popcorn. You know, the last meeting, speaking of corruption, I was speaking about Visit Napa Valley again. And since the last meeting, again, I'm hearing that other city officials, other politicians have been asking Visit Napa Valley for accountability and transparency. And they seem to feel that Lindsey Gallagher gets really defensive when someone asks what her salary is. I don't understand. Why does she have to get defensive? What does she have to hide? Is she not proud of her work? Is she not proud of her salary? What is she hiding? Anyways, this is another example of something the FBI might want to look into, because clearly, when people are hiding the books, when people are dodging public information requests and so forth, they do it for a reason, because they're ashamed and they have something to hide. And there is, once again, I'll remind you, there is a Tourism Improvement District Management Plan that includes a budget. They have to follow the budget for this to work. And certain people are supposed to be watching that. Certain people are supposed to be making sure that they're accountable and transparent with the spending of these tax dollars you collect and hand over, but clearly, it's not happening. The fact that we keep asking the questions, what is the salary of the CEO, President? Is she making three-quarters a million, half a million, one million? What is her salary, all-in with bonuses and everything? And we've been asking about some of the spending they're doing. You know, does doing ads in the Napa Register really put heads in beds during the shoulder season, which is exactly what this Tourism Improvement District was designed for? If you read the District Management Plan, that's in there. The budget's in there. How much money can go for the staff? How much money for marketing and different things? How much for the tourism center and everything? It's all in there, but it's not being followed.
Thank you. Next speaker? Any other public comment in the boardroom? Seeing none, I'll move to the phone lines. No other public comment. I will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board. Next up on our agendas, our Board of Supervisor Reports and Announcements. Supervisor Gallagher?
Great. Thank you, Chair. I did want to mention quickly to anyone in the public who is interested in finding any information about community-based organizations, programming, and their financial reporting, you can always go online and look at their Form 990, which is an IRS return for organizations that are exempt from income tax, and that's easy to find online. Looking ahead to next year, I just wanted to say that Supervisor Cottrell and I are trying to put together with help of staff an outreach and educational event regarding the firearms safety storage ordinance in collaboration with Congressman Thompson's staff, and also looking into red flag laws and having some educational opportunities for the community there. We have started meeting as a subcommittee of the Climate Action Committee to launch the GHD monitoring pilot program that's in coordination with Berkeley Labs, and that is very exciting, and getting started on that, and I'm sure much to come. So thank you, and I wanted to thank Chair Ramos for, boy, fastest meetings in the West, and also very, just run in such an incredibly organized fashion, and always done with a lot of grace and a lot of thought. And I'm sorry, ahead of time, I don't think that I'll be able to get the meetings done quite as quickly as she has. But I want to thank her for her leadership throughout the whole year. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallagher. Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you, Chair. And first, I just want to echo Supervisor Gallagher's thanks to you for an incredibly efficient set of meetings and your leadership over the past year. So thank you for that. And I wanted to provide three updates. First, I held an open house in my district, and we raised some money and got some donations for the Calistoga and Santa Lena Food Pantries, and a little bit more awareness about those operations, as well as the Tucker Farm Center, which is a wonderful community gathering space. And then this week, I attended one of several groundwater workshops that are happening that are being put on by our PBES staff, and I wanted to thank the staff for the presentation there. They've been doing some online and some in person. This one in person was in Yountville, and it was well-attended by, we had several growers there and residents as well. But I think it was a good reminder to me that this process of complying with the state's Groundwater Management Act, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, is something that's been going on for some time. But at each meeting, folks are coming who haven't had background on it. So it really is important to be doing these meetings and starting with introductory information and bringing people up to speed. The other related meeting this week that I attended part of was the Technical Advisory Group for the Groundwater, where I wanted to give a shout out to the grape growers for giving a really great presentation about how growers have done this year, the different kinds of conservation measures that they're putting into place, and where they're finding challenges and opportunities. So that was great, too. And then finally, I wanted to mention, at the RCRC meeting this week, we had a report and a visit from the head of Cal OES, and we were talking about, she was talking about the fact that across the state, we're really suffering staffing shortages in OES departments. And I mentioned that our OES staffer Kendra Boyer had gone to Mariposa, and she said, "We know, and we feature that in our recent meeting because it's a good example of creatively sharing staffers, and it helps those staff gain more expertise, too." So it was a nice moment to hear that Napa County was recognized at the state OES level as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Supervisor Gregory?
Thank you. We had our grand opening for the Bicycle Skills Course at Skyline. If you like bikes, just go check it out. It's a blast for all ages, and it's open all day long, as long as Skyline Park is open. And one more thing, Napa Sanitation District, tomorrow's last board meeting of the year will be memorable. Our longtime general manager, Tim Healy, is retiring. It's his last meeting as the GM, as well as our public rep, the one we appointed eight years ago, David Graves, to represent the other county seat. He's retiring also. So we'll say goodbye to those two tomorrow night and thank them. And the spot, I think, is still being open for application?
That's correct.
Okay. I do think it will close soon. So if anybody is interested in that public spot, check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I just wanted to say, these meetings don't happen without tremendous support from staff, the behind-the-scenes. We get up here and we sit, but the amount of work that goes into having organized agendas, well-managed timed items. I can't remember a year where we have been so smoothly and not had to continue items as this year. And so I want to acknowledge the people that sit beside us here at our wings, first with the clerk staff, with our clerk, Neha Hoskins, and with Paulette, our Assistant Clerk. The work that you have done is tremendous, and it makes this job look incredibly easy. We've made a lot of agenda changes, and they have all been for the better. And nothing gets here without the help of our county councils, so I want to thank Cheryl Bratton for her work. And while it mostly comes in the form of a "No, you can't do that," we appreciate the work that goes in from you and your department. And, you know, this year, our CEO joined us in August, and he has come with already some incredible contributions that have made for some much smoother meetings and really getting us to the point of doing business. So I just want to take this moment to acknowledge that this may look easy, but it's because all these people make my job easy. So thank you. And I am not sorry that this is the last chair position, and I wish you good luck, Supervisor Gallagher. We'll talk in January about that one. So next on our agenda here, we will take up item 6H. This item was pulled from our consent calendar, and I will start off, I'll turn it over to the CEO, and then we can go to board questions.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. I'm going to ask Mr. Sanchez from my office, as well as Mr. Shu from my office, our fire administrator, to come up and answer any questions on the side.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Daniel Sanchez. I'm in the CEO's office. I'm an analyst who worked on this. And I have with me Dave Shu, our fire administrator. I'll briefly talk about the contract itself, and then more what's next. And Dave? And Dave, our fire administrators, will be good for that. So, when we initially started working with our partners, NCFF, the idea was to get the money out quickly, work with them quickly, and get the projects done. But we're no longer in that startup phase anymore. We're in a different phase. And with potentially the BRIC funding, building resilient communities, the infrastructure FEMA grant, and other potential grant funding like that, we're starting to shift into a different phase where we really want to get our contracts and our reimbursement process, our scope of services process, really buttoned down. Because although these projects that we're doing now aren't related to anything federal grants, we want to get staff and our partners ready for that. And so, we've worked with our Auditor Controller's Office, our county council, and NCFF to make sure that our contracts that we're starting to, that we're creating for the current funds, but especially the future funds, are way more buttoned down, have the reporting process much tighter, much better, so that in the future, if and when we do get more funds, we'll be in a much better place. And Dave Shu's here to talk more, if you would like, about what's next. Because we will have a similar item in a month.
Thank you. And members of the board, we're exactly in that position, where we're moving into that new phase. And my presence here is indicative of that, and we are in the process of preparing a much more detailed report in January for you that will outline the future of where we're going, provide you with some very good metrics and goals of where we plan to go with all of this. Again, with the upcoming anticipation of a tremendous amount of money coming forward, federal dollars for continued fire resiliency projects across the county. We'll update you on projects that have been completed, that are ongoing, and what our future plans are, with the whole focus being to provide a much safer environment for the expected continuation of fire activity into the future. So, that is where we're at. You'll learn a lot more in January when we come back with future information, and we look forward to finalizing these amendments for the previous agreement and then moving on to the next phase.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Shu. And it's really helpful to get some of that background. And, I mean, I pulled this item for a couple of reasons. First, to just say thank you to the team, both in the CEO's office and with the new fire administration team, as well as our auditor controller and Firewise, for all working together to, as Mr. Sanchez is saying, getting everything buttoned up a little bit and being able to prepare for what comes in the future. And you referenced the fact that we'll be getting these federal grants through the BRIC process, but I think it's important even for our own county funding, right? We're going to need to come up with some way that we can pay for a larger scope of fire prevention work. And so, the better our contracting and scoping processes are, that pays off for the local level as well. So, thank you for that. And then, I'm happy, Mr. Shu, to hear about what we'll be hearing in January, and particularly the reference to metrics, because I think having those data points is so helpful. Again, not just for this moment, but for as we go forward. And what I would love to see, too, is if we could have a map that can show this 14 million, how that, how those dollars have been spent on the landscape to make that safer. Because I think the map is such a great visual way for us to educate ourselves and the community about how we're becoming safer as a county. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I do appreciate certainly, you know, I think, a recap here of just where we've been. The way the county came in on this money, it was seed money. It was startup money. We were all taking a chance. We were operating from a position knowing that we simply could not continue the way we were before with just the county's chipping program on a voluntary basis, that we needed to be far more proactive. And as this all has come to, it's now beyond adolescent stage. You know, we definitely are putting some parameters in place to better position ourselves. So, thank you for all that work, and I think really to the work within the CEO's office and the auditor controller to bring this all in check. We do know that when these federal funds come our way, those rules are incredibly strict, and $50 million is not a small amount of money, and we've got to make sure that we have the right processes. So, thank you for that. Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Members of the board, I just wanted to point out that we do have Mr. Joe Nordlinger, who's with, he's the CEO of Napa County Firewise Foundation. He's here today. And I just wanted to thank him for being here and thank him for his very close partnership, working relationship with my office and the county. And we're really looking forward to having a productive relationship with Napa County Firewise going forward. So, I want to thank you for being here.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the board, I'll open public comment on this Item 6H. Please proceed to the podium. Three minutes on this item.
Hear me?
Forgot you.
Thank you, Chair Ramos and board. I'm glad we pulled this item, because I've been thinking about it. But I didn't want to hold anybody up. And I, too, think about the future. I think about my grandson's future in particular. And so, when we talk about going beyond the adolescent phase here in budgeting this type of activity, I'm thinking about how we can also be mindful about getting beyond the adolescent phase of the profligate carbon spending that we do. And so, how does this relate to carbon? Which is basically what we're hearing here, is this fire is here to stay. And do we want to exacerbate that fire? And how can we mitigate it? This fire is climate change induced, and currently, we're making it worse. Another consent item, calendar item, was about an additional services relating to the Napa County Regional Greenhouse Gas Inventory, specifically sequestration. And Ascent has agreed to go back and do the following. Provide a list of preliminary greenhouse gas reduction measures, quantifying the greenhouse gas emissions from vegetation management practices in the county, and quantifying future carbon storage in the county. That is, you survey your landscape. Is it a net emitter, or is it a net carbon sink? I think we know what it is. But let's say we can hit reset. What do we make of it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this Item 6H? Turn to the phone lines. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, second by Supervisor Pedro Rosales. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We do not have any administrative items for special districts. Our next item, our administrative item, is the Director of Health and Human Services requests the board receive a report from Napa County Mental Health Board. They are presenting their annual report for fiscal year July 22 through June 30, 23. And... Just one moment. Come on up. Excellent. You can either present here at the table or at the podium, however you wish.
Great. Good morning, Chair Ramos. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Cassandra Islami, and I'm the Health and Human Services Agency Deputy Director here with Behavioral Health. And I'm honored to present Christine Hataja and Robert Palmer, who are chairs of the Mental Health Advisory Board, to share the Mental Health Advisory Board Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So, thank you for having us today. I'm really excited to share the work of the Mental Health Board. We are a very dedicated and passionate group of citizens who are concerned about the mental health of our community. And we learn about the mental health of our community through various speakers, through reviewing county contracts, programs, and services, and by doing special workgroup projects where we do research about different issues, and also importantly, by site visits to facilities and programs that serve Napa County residents. So, this year, this last fiscal year, we identified four high-priority programs, facilities, and resources that we recommend the board support in the next three years. One is the expansion of behavioral health services for children and youth. Second is the continued integration of the county's behavioral health functions and services. Third, the expansion of housing and treatment facilities for individuals with serious mental illness. And last, the development of a more robust peer provider behavioral health workforce. So, I just like to speak to each of those briefly, looking first at children and youth mental health. In 2023, the U.S. Surgeon General declared a youth mental health crisis. We have seen evidence of this same crisis in Napa County with an increase in youth crisis interventions by behavioral health crisis teams, an increase in emergency psychiatric interventions, and an increase in youth suicidal ideation. In Napa County, we are encouraged by the expansion of school wellness centers and the developing expansion of youth crisis services in the County Crisis Stabilization Unit. However, we are still concerned about the extent of mental health issues with our youth. And we recommend continued investment in prevention, early intervention, and treatment resources for children and youth. And I would like just to speak personally that I know from lived experience that effectively dealing with mental health issues of children and youth improves and saves lives. Secondly, integration of behavioral health services. Over the past couple of years, Napa County has integrated mental health and alcohol and drug services into a behavioral health division. This integrative change aligns with the goals of CAL AIM, to better coordinate and streamline delivery of services and ensure that there's no wrong door to access to effective treatment. The Mental Health Board heartily endorses this integration because of the strong relationship between mental health and substance use disorder. And accomplishing the aims of CAL AIM requires a professional staff sufficient to meet the need. We all know about the shortage of mental health workers in our county, in every county in the state and nationally, but we need to encourage programs that support the development of our staff. We urge the county to prioritize fiscal and administrative actions necessary to ensure that we achieve the important service delivery goals of Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health Integration, and CAL AIM's reforms. And I also speak that as a continuation of that integration, we are also looking at an integration of the Mental Health Board and the Advisory Board for Alcohol and Drugs. Looking now at housing for those with mental illness. We're all aware of the critical need for affordable housing in Napa County and across the state. Our county's recent investments in project Home Key projects, in Heritage House and Valley Verde projects will significantly increase the stock of supportive housing in the county. However, there continues to be a shortfall in supportive housing for people with mental illness. This lack of housing continuum results in placement of Napa residents in adult residential facilities and inpatient psychiatric facilities outside of the county, remote from family and support. Napa County residents are placed in facilities as far as Red Bluff, Modesto, Stockton, Yuba City, and other locations, making it very difficult for families to provide support and stay connected. Napa County should help development of community-based adult residential facilities in or adjacent to Napa's continuum of care to improve outcomes and to recognize significant cost savings over time. All of those out-of-county facilities are really expensive. I mean, I've visited some. If you look at the daily rates, it's overwhelming. So, if we could have people in local facilities in our county, I think that would save us a lot of money. Lastly, peer support specialists. California has now approved a program for peer support specialist certification that enables peer specialists to provide Medicaut-covered services. Peer specialists and peer-run programs are an important part of and an alternative to existing mental health systems and services. Peer support specialists offer first-person experience, perspective to individuals with mental health issues from those who speak a similar language, cultural affinity, age, and gender alignment perspectives. The Mental Health Board believes that the role of peer support specialist is underdeveloped in our community and should be nurtured through development of realistic compensation and career path structures that will attract and retain motivated service providers. And of course, for more detail, you can read our total mental health report that we have submitted to the board. Thank you very much for your time and interest. Rob, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a word or two. I was chair last fiscal year, and it was an honor to be on the board and in that role. I'd like to thank Supervisor Gregory for his consistent participation and wise counsel on so many issues. He's really a very integral part of the board's deliberations and work, and I thank you. Just one last sort of underscore of the children and the youth part of our report. That was a focus of the Data Notebook Project from the California Behavioral Health Planning Council last year. And it underscored for me, and I think for the board, that our youth really took a hit in the pandemic. And those deficits aren't going to go away just because the pandemic has moderated. It's an area where we need to be persistent and supportive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, you know, I think it bears saying in this space that part of what the Mental Health Board does is not just as voluntary, bringing thoughtful decisions and recommendations to the board, but you actually carry out a statutory obligation as well. And I think that that is really important. Certainly, we know that during COVID, the board wasn't able to make its visits and inspections to providers. And that has restarted, and we are so incredibly grateful. The list of recommendations that you have provided to us are incredibly thoughtful and reflective of our community. And I look forward to this report because I know that people from varied backgrounds, working with our Director Islami, have brought forth these recommendations. So, thank you. This is certainly timely for us to look at. And we thank you for the contributions. And I will note that we do have a few vacancies, according to the report. We have, it says four in the report.
That was effective June 2023.
That was the 23, and so, that is outstanding.
Yeah, we have two people who will not be continuing due to... Sorry. We have two members now who will not be continuing because their terms have expired and they've been on the board. and they've been on the board for a while, and they will not be seeking reappointment. So, we do have a couple of openings effective January 1.
January 1, so we will have a few, so we'll go out for recruitment for those. But, thank you. You know, when we look at all of our committees and commissions and the work that is done, this is incredibly important work, timely, relevant, and we thank you for the contributions that you make to our community as a whole. Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you so much for the report. It's very comprehensive, and I know a lot of work went into it, so thank you for that. And, you know, I just wanted to note that this is going to be really important for us to discuss more fully in the near future. You know, we have a 24% vacancy rate in our Behavioral Health Department. It's one of our largest departments, and I think that that is something really critical that we're going to need to talk about and figure out a way to attract and retain behavioral health specialists and be possibly, you know, more creative. I think the addition of the peer support role and using that as a launching point is something that we can be doing, and as you said, it's something we need to invest more time and resources in. So, I hope that this is something that we can discuss more fully in the near future and really flesh out those recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, our Mental Health Board liaison Supervisor Gregory.
Thank you. I want to echo what's been said about the current board composition. It's an incredibly committed and engaged group right now. I think the best I've seen. Also, this thanks, Rob and Christine, you guys have been excellent chairs of the board and have guided us to this level of success. We couldn't have done it without all of you, and thanks to Cassandra Islami and all your staff who show up every meeting and really demonstrate that you're doing all the great work that we all, you know, the community needs and expects, so thank you.
Seeing no other comments or questions from the board, I'll open public comment on this item. Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll go to the phone lines. Okay, I will close public comment. This is simply us receiving a report, and I thank you for coming to visit us and for your continued service on the Mental Health Board. Next, we will take up item 11B. The county executive officer requests the board receive a presentation and adopt the 2024 legislative and regulatory platforms. This is a unanimous vote requirement. And...
Thank you, Madam Chair, woman, and members of the board, introducing Andrew Mize, our Legislative Intergovernmental Affairs staff person, and I think he is going to take, I think the plan is, is to take B, C, and D sort of concurrently. You're going to be voting at the end of the day on B, obviously with the understanding from County Council, the approval, but having the full conversation, B, C, and D all at once. Mr. Mize.
Thank you. I will now call up items 11B, 11C, and 11D for our consideration. Mr. Mize, take it away.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Andrew Mize. I'm here today to ask for your support, feedback, and unanimous vote to adopt this document inclusive of any changes made today as your legislative and regulatory platform for 2024. And next slide, please. We started the process early in July with three desired outcomes. We wanted the platform to be a more responsive and nimble tool for our advocacy. We determined that consolidating the state and federal platforms allowed us to reduce overlapping content and cover the same scope. Second, we wanted the platform to reflect the most current and pressing challenges faced by our staff. And third, we wanted to work with community leaders to ensure the platform reflects the issues most important to our community. Since that time, the document has gone through several iterations that reflect feedback from our department heads, from the Legislative Subcommittee, and from community groups. I look forward to working with each of these groups to test and further refine this process and document throughout 2024. Next slide, please. Let's talk about content and purpose. This is not an exhaustive or all-encompassing list of every county priority. This is a limited list of topics that your board and department heads identified as being particularly challenging or of especially high priority in the current state and federal legislative and regulatory climate. Next slide, please. In the 2023 platforms, your board included two legislative principles. This is a good concept used by other counties in California. So, we refined the idea. We created a set of three procedural principles that give your board limited discretion to consider matters consistent with but not specifically enumerated within the platform document itself. These principles are procedural and not content-based. In the prior version, for instance, every section included some version of oppose unfunded mandates. Here, we consolidated that to a single overarching procedural statement at the start of the document that applies throughout. These principles should give your board the ability to act quickly when needed and to pause for reflection when it is necessary to give and issue full public consideration. Next slide, please. The six broad areas of interest that comprise the document were identified by your board and by department heads as areas that required particular attention over the past year. This does not mean that they are the county's only priorities. This is not an exhaustive list of county priorities. Nor is your board precluded from considering any issue that is entirely outside the scope of this document. Legislators find new problems to solve every year. It is exceedingly unlikely that we anticipated every one. To the extent that issues are outside the scope of this document, your board continues to retain full authority to consider those issues as needed. Next slide, please. The county's agricultural history and its abundance of natural resources are central facets of the county's identity and shape the ways in which this organization conducts business. This section addresses three key interests enumerated by your board. Advocating for increased federal and state investment in our county-run agricultural programs, maintaining the careful balance set forth in the county's land use ordinances between agricultural, urban, and undeveloped lands, and finally, defending the county's land use authority from undue trampling by the state or federal governments. Next slide, please. Over the course of the year, your board has identified climate action as a significant priority item for the county. This resulting climate action and resiliency section covers both advocacy to reduce the community impacts of climate change, and this organization's continued support for efforts that will help us as an organization reduce the environmental impact of our operations. Next slide, please. The infrastructure section of the platform builds on prior year's platforms. In particular, as the state considers whether to reevaluate its criteria for funding allocations in several infrastructure programs, we want to maintain readiness to exercise our voice to help shape any new criteria. Next slide, please. Disaster mitigation and recovery spans a wide range of federal and state funding mechanisms, regulations, and requirements. This subsection reflects the priorities of your board in learning from our significant past experiences responding to and recovering from disaster events. Public health and safety, a broad category that spans the health and wellness of our communities, in this document highlights the high-profile topics of youthful offenders, victims' rights, and investment in public health. Next slide, please. Many of the subsections contained within our resident quality of life area could feasibly fit into other sections of the platform. We pulled these subsections out and into their own category because each one was raised as a challenge by your board and department heads and involves direct contact between the county and a large number of our residents, and thus warranted particular emphasis. Next slide, please. With respect to the Social Safety Net Services section, I want to again note that this is not a comprehensive list of all the social safety net services offered by the county. These are the areas that your board and our department heads identified as being particularly challenging under current operating conditions and on which the state legislature put particular emphasis during this session. We expect these areas to continue to be high-profile issues at the state legislature next year. Next slide, please. Thank you to the Legislative Subcommittee, to our department heads, and to the community organization leaders who spent their time and energy providing input on this document. Thank you also to each member of this board for your guidance throughout this process and feedback along the way. I'm here today to ask for your support, feedback, and unanimous vote to adopt this document inclusive of any changes made today as your legislative and regulatory platform for 2024. I'm happy to take your questions, and as CEO also noted earlier, have with us here are both our state and federal advocates, Mr. Paul Yoder and Ms. Jessica Aunty. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, not only does this have a different look, it definitely has a different read and a different impact than the legislative platform we've had over the years. So, I want to acknowledge the amount of work that has gone into this. We definitely have expanded to really give a feel of what the challenges are specific to Napa County, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that. And thank you to my colleagues, Supervisor Catrell and Supervisor Gregory, for taking the first pass-through and being our guinea pigs on this one. Supervisor Catrell.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mize, for putting this document together and the whole team that helped support it. I think, as you mentioned, Chair, this is a departure from the previous legislative platforms, simply in terms of length, and we've really, you've really distilled it down and made it, I think, more functional operationally for when our team, our staff, and our lobbyists are taking our priorities to meet with legislators and move those things forward. So, I wanted to just say thank you for that. And I also think that the public input we got along the way was very helpful, and sometimes it's difficult to get the public to come interface on topics, and we had a good turnout, and I thought you were receptive and happy to meet with people, too, so I appreciate that. I also want to call out the fact that in your slides, there's a photo of Pope Valley, which I don't know if Pope Valley's ever actually made it into the legislative platform before, so thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. And then, just a point, I think for me, that this is a work in progress. It's the document that we've got for the next year. We'll learn from staff, we'll learn from what the larger context is about how we're going to refine that. So, that's one of the things I'm looking at. And then, I think the other piece that we've talked about in some of those Legislative Subcommittee meetings, and Ms. Dawson, I know you've brought this up, too, is the importance of having this document and then something even more concise, that when we actually go meet with agencies or legislators, we've got a real summary. And I just, Mr. Yoder, since you're here, also, we've got great feedback from the lobbyists about, when we were talking about the document, they kept saying, "Yeah, shorter. You can make it shorter." So, that's, I think, really helpful for us to hear, too, so thank you.
Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, I just want to add a little more thanks to Mr. Mize, who I think this year has really grown into this role. He started just about a year ago or more, and it's a brand-new position, and you've really, you know, made it your own, and I think the new resources with Holly that we've put under this very important matter is paying off, so good job to both of you, and we have the best lobbyists around. And I'm not saying that just because you're here in person.
Supervisor Pedrosa.
Thank you, Chair. You know, this is great, and I think, the one thing I think about is the audience, the public. How do we make sure the public can understand this in a way of this is what we're doing when we go to trips, when we go to DC, when we go to Sacramento? It's, these are the items that we're actively working for them. So, I think, just thinking about the public rollout around this, I think this is much easier to read and understand compared to previous years, and I'm just looking forward to how we build it from here. I think some of us won't be here, but for those that remain here using this template, I think it's going to be very digestible and understandable to the public, so job well done.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Just want to echo my thanks, Mr. Mize. I know that you and the team put a lot of work into this, and thank you for answering so many of my questions and for reminding me many times, this is not an exhaustive list of all of the county's priorities. I think that's very important that we continue to communicate that to the public, and thank you for all of the engagement that you did with the community partners. I think that that was really, really important and has really helped to build relationships in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I did notice that this is not exhaustive, repeated a few times, so obviously that was for you, Supervisor Gallagher. I think a couple of things that are noteworthy to say as it comes up is the acquisition of Skyline is in here. That in and of itself sends a message of how incredibly important our acquisition of Skyline is. As a reminder, we don't own it, we act like we do, we put pump tracks on it, and we enjoy it thoroughly, and it's truly a treasure in our community, and so making sure that we are elevating that discussion is incredibly important and reflective of the work. But I think also, some of the great celebrations to say in here is our Affordable ADU Loan Program, and to highlight that, it's a tremendous investment that this board made utilizing our one-time ARPA dollars to really help make a dent in terms of housing production, but also in diversifying the supply of our housing, and to be a leader in this space and to call it, I think, is definitely noteworthy in this area. I see no other comments or questions from the board. I will open this for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Chair Ramos. Oh, I'm sorry, what? Would you like to take item C and D first, or then you could do public comment on all of it? Thank you. I will do that. I will invite up our lobbyist, Mr. Paul Yoder from Shaw, Yoder, and Tui Lang. What? Okay, you can, I will let you take it, but I did pretty good on that.
So, do you want me to go before the feds? Feds are up first, I think.
So, I'm going to let Andrew decide what order you would like to take up the lobbyists.
I believe it's agendized as feds first and then state. Let's keep that.
Okay, so on Zoom, we should have someone from Platinum Advisors.
Hi, this is Jessica Aunty, I'm here.
Hi, let's see if we can get you on our screen here.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, good morning, Jessica. Thank you for joining us. We'll hand it over to you for a couple minutes. Anything you want to add to our platform or anything that should be on our radar?
Great, well, thank you so much. It's great to see you all today. Just want to give kind of a quick end-of-year update as well as a little political update preview of 2024. Just want to give kind of a quick end-of-year update, as well as a little political update preview of 2024. This year, we have really seen the internal disagreements between the Republican caucus, especially regarding spending. It'd be a major focus on Capitol Hill. This focus has also hindered some other legislative priorities from moving forward throughout the year. This really began with Speaker McCarthy receiving some pushback from his caucus after negotiating spending levels in exchange for raising the debt ceiling this summer, leading him to instruct his House appropriators to write those spending bills at lower levels than what was agreed upon in the debt ceiling, kind of leading to the clash we'll see with the Senate early next year, kind of overspending. Looking over to next year, our next two spending deadlines are coming up on January 19th and February 2nd. Kind of having two deadlines for different bills is kind of unique. The idea here was to give them a bit more time to negotiate on some of the more difficult appropriation bills, but when Congress returns in January, they'll just have eight working days before the first deadline, and there is still a significant amount of work to do. The House so far has only passed eight appropriation bills all along party lines, while the Senate has passed three, but their appropriation bills did make it through committee with bipartisan support. Early this year, we watched the House have to pull several of their appropriation bills from the floor when they did not have the necessary support. What the House leadership is kind of experiencing is they have some moderate members of their caucus who feels these bills are too extreme and unable to support them, while some members of the Freedom Caucus view this, them as not going far enough. And with such the margins, if they're going to pass them along party lines, they really need the support of the entire party to accomplish that. As looking at the overall spending bills, the House and Senate have not yet agreed to an overall top-line numbers on appropriations. The Freedom Caucus has indicated that they will now accept the spending levels agreed upon in the national debt ceiling. So if they're able to do that, that will definitely help move things forward. I also just wanted to flag a few priorities that Congressman Thompson has been working on of particular interest to the county. With delayed appropriations, the farm bill has also been delayed, but Congressman Thompson has been attempting to include his bill, which would require the Federal Crop Insurance Corporation to study and implement a crop insurance program that would cover losses due to smoke exposure of wine grapes. So that's his priority for the farm bill. He also continues to work on his bill that would exempt wildfire payments from federal taxable income, which the county has endorsed. There is some talk of a potential tax package being, moving forward in the new year, potentially along with an appropriations package. So if that did happen, that would be the best vehicle for that bill to move forward. And then finally, Congressman Thompson, as well as other members of the California delegation, have begun, beginning to work on kind of a larger wildfire package, which we could see early next year. So we'll kind of be keeping an eye out and informing you all about that. Moving on to kind of the political update with the caveat that the campaign is really just getting started, so we could still see a lot of things change. Looking at the House, over the past few sessions, we have seen a significant reduction in the amount of competitive seats, especially after last round's redistricting. Currently, there's only 18 seats held by Republicans that President Biden won in 2020. We'll see some changes to the map this year. North Carolina has a new map, which has led to several Democratic incumbents deciding to retire because their seats would be so challenging. New York will likely also redo their map. This could lead to some significant pickups for Democrats. We'll also see a new majority-black district in Alabama, and you could see a few other new districts in the South, depending on how some court cases go. With so few competitive districts, how these court cases go really could end up determining control of the House. But looking forward to next year's election, I look at it really as a toss-up right now. Definitely will be affected by turnout in the presidential election as well. Looking at the Senate, Leader Schumer has a very difficult map with potentially 13 competitive seats. Only two are held by Republicans, the rest Democrats. Majority, kind of major battleground states will be Michigan, Nevada, Wisconsin, Arizona, Montana, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, and West Virginia. Looking at Nevada, Pennsylvania, and Wisconsin, you have Democratic incumbent senators running for reelection in states that President Biden won in 2020. In Michigan, Senator Stabenow has announced her retirement. The likely Democratic nominee will be Alyssa Slotkin. She's run multiple challenging races since being elected to the House in 2018, and you're looking at kind of a potentially messy primary on the Republican side. Senator Manchin has announced he will retire, really leading to that seat most definitely probably switching hands and being picked up by Republicans. In Arizona, you have an interesting situation with Congressman Gallego running as a Democrat, Carrie Lake likely the Republican nominee who lost the governor's race last cycle, and Senator Sinema has not yet indicated if she will run for reelection as an independent or not, potentially setting up a three-way race. Probably the most difficult races for Democrats to keep will be Ohio and Montana. These are some of the few states that the voters pick senators and the president of different parties. Sheriff Brown and John Tester are very popular in their states and probably the only two Democrats that could win statewide, but those are still looking to be challenging. And when you look, the CDC will mostly be focused on defense. There really aren't very many pickup opportunities, the best being Florida and Texas. And while they have been able to recruit some strong candidates there, those will likely be very challenging races, especially considering the investments they'll need to make protecting the seats that they already have. The Republican side in the Senate has really been focused this year on avoiding nominating problematic candidates that will be, make those races harder to win in the general election. This is one of the issues for their poor performance in the 2022 midterms. So they've really been more aggressive to try to coalesce around a candidate and avoid a primary. While they were able to do that in Pennsylvania, it does look like they'll have kind of primaries in Wisconsin, Michigan, and Ohio. So something to kind of look out for as the primary season kind of kicks off this spring. Moving over to the presidential, does look like we're up for a rematch between President, former President Trump and President Biden. Recent polling really shows Trump going into the Iowa caucus pretty strong. Nikki Haley is showing some momentum in New Hampshire, and you could see a situation where she's able to kind of coalesce the anti-Trump vote. In New Hampshire, there is not a Democratic primary, so those delegates do not count, and Biden is not on the ballot. So some independents and Democrats switching their registration and voting for her as well. There is a kind of a longer gap between when the primary kick-off, kicks off in Ohio, in Iowa on January 15th to South Carolina at the end of February. So if they're able to kind of pick up some momentum, be able to raise money, kind of be able to kind of coalesce that momentum and potentially going into Super Tuesday strong. However, it is important to remember that this is, at the end of the day, a delegate race. On the Republican side, majority of the races are winner-takes-all for delegates, and the threshold has been risen on how much a candidate, how many votes a candidate needs to receive to win delegates. All that really favors a front-runner such as Trump, making it even more difficult for someone like Haley or DeSantis to kind of change that dynamic, even if they have some strong showings in the early contests. Looking at the general election, you know, I think everyone is seeing kind of polls right now that show Biden up or it'll be very close. And I think, you know, most people are just not very excited about a Biden-Trump rematch. We're seeing a lot of interest in third-party candidates, especially among younger voters, especially with like Robert Kennedy running, who has such good name ID coming from the Kennedy family. But despite Biden's kind of low approval ratings, which he's really had throughout his presidency, you continue to see Democrats do well in the midterms in 2022 and the 2023 off-year elections. The overturning of Roe v. Wade has obviously been a major factor for that, and I would continue likely to see that in the 2024 election, especially with some key states which will have abortion ballot measures on the ballot. Again, we have a long ways to go before Election Day, and a lot will definitely change, but that's kind of current kind of state of play.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, we thank you for your time, Jessica. I'm going to now turn it over to Paul from the state.
Chairwoman, thank you. Paul Yoder, Shaw Yoder, Antui Shmuelzer, and Ling, board members, staff, members of the public. Great to be here today. Season's greetings. Sorry Karen's not here. She couldn't make it today. She sends you all her best, of course. So, your federal advocates ended with politics. If it's okay, I'll start with politics very, very briefly. Pretty much everybody knows we, we had an election for a new speaker. Speaker Rivas is now fully in charge of the Assembly, and we had an election for the next pro tem to be installed early in 2024, Senator Mike McGuire from neighboring Sonoma County. That has been moved up. We believe that the transition from pro-tem Tony Atkins to Senator McGuire will be on February 5th, a little bit earlier. We think that's because of the looming state budget deficit, which I'll get to in a minute, and the need to tackle that a little sooner than later. But Senator, we expect Senator McGuire to be the pro-tem no later than February 5th. So, we have had a lot of changes as a result of the change in speakership. We have new committee chairs. We have, we talked about your two-member state legislative delegations being small but mighty. They are still small, but they are mightier, if you will. The county's Assemblywoman has risen all the way to Majority Leader of the State Assembly, and I do think that when Senator McGuire becomes pro-tem, names new committee chairs, the county senator, who is already in a great position in leadership in the Senate, probably will be even further up the ladder. And so your legislators continue to perform exceptionally, in our view. So that's great. We need them on a variety of issues. But going to the budget, it's not good. Staff said it couldn't give bad news. I'm not sure how... Come on, guys. I mean, we all know the problem's estimated to be $68 billion. I guess it could be worse, right? And so, what will happen? What we think, what we know is the Republicans in the legislature have already called on the governor and legislative leadership for a special extraordinary session on the budget. Not sure that the governor's going to go there, although the governor may have to invoke emergency powers under the Constitution to access the state's reserves. But what we do think is going to happen when they come back after the New Year's holiday is, in January of the second year, that's always a little bit busier anyway, this January is going to be very, very busy, in our estimation. We, you should expect, the public should expect, department heads should expect, the governor will say, "We have to roll up our sleeves. We have to start revisiting the last budget right now." To the extent, especially to the extent, we know we're going, this is we, the royal we in Sacramento, to the extent the legislature and the governor know that actions will be taken by June 15th, we should try to take them by January 15th or the end of January. We should try, the state should try to get not 12 months of savings, but 17 months of savings wherever possible, 17 and a half wherever possible. We really think they're going to hit the ground running. We really think, frankly, some of the things you may want to worry about from a county perspective in 2024, going to have to worry about unfortunately in January. To emphasize the point on the, on the deficit, there is an in-year budget deficit in the neighborhood of $14, $15, $16 billion. That's as of today, as I sit here giving you this report. The '23, '24 state budget is known to be out of balance by that much money. And so I think, you know, that really underscores the governor's desire to do something, the legislature, to a certain extent, their desire to do things sooner than later. So, let's talk a little bit about good news. The state does have $24 billion in its general fund reserves. The governor can call that emergency, as I mentioned. That money can be accessed. In addition, the state has $10 billion in reserves dedicated to K-14 education, Proposition 98 funded programs. You can't necessarily, in K-12, you can't go dollar-for-dollar, but if I go $68 billion and I take the reserves, right? $34 billion off to 68, we're getting there. The legislative analyst says there's probably about $8 or $9 or $10 billion of spending in this current year budget, new spending that hasn't gone out the door. Can pull that back, so we're at $44 billion. The state budget has grown so big that there is a lot of internal borrowing at zero or low interest that can occur. That was part of the '23, '24 state budget. The estimates are, you could do, the state could do another $10 billion relatively easy. So I'm at, anybody? I'm at $54 billion? But there's still, at that point, another $14 billion to go. What the governor proposed early last year was to push out prior-year spending. And there is spending, there's money that was allocated in 2021, '21, '22, and as I just mentioned, '22, '23 that has not yet been spent. There is an opportunity for the governor and the legislature to push all that, say, you know, we'll ultimately spend that money in '25, '26, or '26, '27. That starts to get into that remaining $14 billion. At some point, board members, I think everyone should expect some cuts in 2024. The thing, the picture I really want to paint here, and then I'll move on to a little bit of logistics and take questions, is, I just painted you a picture where the governor and the legislature, they use all the reserves, literally every dollar that is available to them. To the extent that the problem lingers into the '25, '26 budget year, that means there's no money in reserves. That's something you may see the governor want to protect against, and that's going to be a tension, two big tensions to look for in January. And then I will take questions. One is, does the governor say we need to use all the, everything we can in the reserves right now? Or we need to have a better glide path? That's going to be a big deal. Second thing to really watch is because state revenues are down so much, in fact, the state could reduce spending to the schools significantly, in the range of $15 to $20 billion, which would reduce per pupil spending by a ton. I don't think, I'm just going to say it, in an election year, I don't see a lot of members of the legislature wanting to vote to reduce per pupil spending. I'm just not sure that's going to happen, and so that's why I wanted to paint that other picture that doesn't include significant cuts to Prop 98 programs. We're working hard, as you know, on the VLF backfill, on Skyline, on a variety of issues at the board. Staff have identified as priorities. We're very proud of all our successes on this county's behalf. This guy's killing it. Lot of, lot of good work in there. Very proud of that, and, you know, thank you, Chairwoman. Happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your attempts at not delivering bad news, although that wasn't entirely successful, but we, we will still keep you around. Any questions from the board? Any questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. This is public comment on items 11B, C, and D together. Three minutes, public comment, all three items.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Yvonne Boginsky. I'm coming in a little late on this game, and I apologize. I just became aware of the legislative platform information a few days ago, but I did talk with Mr. Mizer in the back of the room. My concerns were around the guiding principles. There were three that were noted, and I had some suggestions for three more. I would like to suggest that one of the guiding principles, they do talk in the overview about the remarkable ecological diversity of Napa County, and I would suggest that there be a guiding principle that it would address Napa County protecting and conserving that remarkable ecological diversity and opposing encroachment to prevent denigration of wildlife corridors, open space habitat, and water pollution. I also am asking for a second guiding principle to be added on the impact of the climate crisis and the ensuring responsibility to reduce our carbon emissions is the lens to decide and determine the impact of our decisions for future development in this county. And finally, a third guiding principle about, there's a statement in there about agriculture is the beating heart of Napa County's economy, and I took that and said, "You know, the lifeblood of this community are our waters. We must pursue all means to ensure that our creeks, streams, and rivers are maintained, cleaned up, free from chemicals and pollutants, and available to the nourishment of all life. We must also set limits and guidelines for groundwater access by agricultural and corporate interests." On the section on public health, while we can agree to the safety and well-being of county residents as a priority, I would request that the county add a caveat to protect its citizens from the harmful disease-producing chemicals, carcinogenic chemicals that are used so widely in this county. According to Breath California, our asthma rates are at 26.7%. Compare this to 14.8% for all of California and our cancer rates. Well, back in 2016, CBS reported Napa had the highest cancer rate in the whole state, and quote, "No one knows why." Now, we're starting to get a better understanding of that why, and we need to stop pretending that the poisons that are being sprayed on our weeds and food are not affecting our bodies. Three minutes obviously isn't long enough to put all my thoughts out there, but it's a place to start. a place to start. Thank you.
Jim Wilson, on behalf of Napa Climate Now today. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, supervisors, thank you, legislative analyst Andrew Mize, and thank you, federal and state advocates, for being here today. We want to thank in particular the Legislative Subcommittee, Supervisors Ryan and Cottrell, for listening to Napa Climate Now. We've been doing these, we've been participating in this public outreach process for years now, and I got to say that we feel like we were listened to this time, better than other times. Let me just give you two examples, please. First of all, we didn't, maybe a little like Yvonne mentioned, you know, we didn't get our organizing principle of the climate emergency written up into the top three, as we heard, they're procedural, we get that. But I believe that we did get a half a page on the climate emergency and the effect of that, which is the commitment to achieving net zero climate pollution by or before 2030. So when we talk about a 2030 target, we're really talking about a limit. Remember, big picture here, that back 30 years ago, when the IPCC was formed and began to meet manually, we were talking about already bending the curve, when the CO2 was 350 ppm. And so, you know, we've doubled that amount of CO2 load in this razor-thin atmosphere of ours in the last 30 years. And so we have a predicament, and we got to do something right away. And even if we can't get that overriding principle at the top of the page, we can behave as if it's going to be, it's going to be dictating how we see our role in planning and development going forward. And so the other thing I wanted to mention very quickly here was, just to give you one example of what you have done with our input, and I want to thank you, in particular, Mr. Mize, for hustling and sort of like getting a lot of this last-minute stuff done. We feel like we are part of the process. There's a student group also who was involved this time around, and they also are grateful for your availability to them. Here's the example. Invest in expanding statewide vegetation management efforts. Right, we just heard about how the California contingent is going to be working in Washington to get some help with fire protection, and we need that. But this is how it was reworded, please listen. Invest in expanding statewide vegetation management efforts. And in the development and utilization of methods and technologies that do not cause an increase in climate pollution to do so. Okay? So that's the key, because we're not looking at offsetting pollution years down the line. We no longer have the luxury of time, but we're looking at the 2030 limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the boardroom? CNN, I'll turn to the phone lines. We have no other public comment on this item. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. We are simply receiving reports on 11, C and D, but for our consideration is the unanimous vote and approval of our legislative and regulatory platform for 2024. We have a motion by Supervisor Pedrosa, second by Supervisor Gregory. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to our advocates, both state and federal, and to Mr. Mize for all of this work. It has definitely not gone unnoticed, the tremendous improvements that we have made to our platform this year. At this time, we will recess until 10:55.
Recording stopped.
No, we. Okay, we have had. We do have two more items before us. I'm gonna go ahead and take them in order right now. And I will call up item 13A. County Council and the Director of Health and Human Services request the introduction and motion of intent to adopt an ordinance amending portions of our county code to ensure consistency. And I'm gonna turn it over to our county council, Cheryl Bratton.
Thank you Chair Ramos. I wanted to let the board know that this item has an indirect impact on OLA health. And out of an abundance of caution, I'm gonna suggest to Supervisors Petrosa and Gregory that you consider recusing yourself before staff begins.
I will be recusing myself. My wife works for the OLA Health Foundation.
I don't have any financial interest in OLA, but I'm in a relationship with their CEO, so it makes sense for me to play it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go far. Okay, I will turn it over. We have from County Council's office, Ms. Susie Altman. Are you gonna kick it out for us today?
I will. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Ramos and members of the board. This item is a request to amend section 2.7 of the Napa County Code. It has to do with the Partnership Healthcare Plan Commission. NAPA has been a member since 1994. Currently, there's 14 counties in partnership health plan in the commission. And in the next year, they're gonna be expanding it to 24 counties. So to prevent an unwieldy commission, Partnership Health Plan is working on reducing the number of commissioners per county. They're doing it by population size. And so our request today would be to reduce our commissioner allocation from two commissioners to one, with our Director of HHSA being our sole commissioner. The other requested changes are really to streamline the county's ordinances so that they're pretty consistent among the partnership commissioner members. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. And certainly always do appreciate staff, including our red lines, so it can make it very easy for us to understand what is in fact changing. This has definitely served our county well, and that is exciting on behalf of other counties that they're joining us. I don't see any questions from the board. I'll open public comment on this item 13A. Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll go to the phone lines.
Sorry, one on the line?
Thank you. I'll take it.
We have Catherine Power. Catherine?
Hi, this is Catherine Power from Partnership Health Plan. I'm just here to answer any questions if there are. Thanks.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. We don't have any public comment, and I don't see any questions from the board at this time. I will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
Well, I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the ordinance, amending portions of chapter 2.70.010 of the Napa County Code.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion of intent to adopt the ordinance that will come back to us on consent from Supervisor Gallagher and a second by Supervisor Cottrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll know the two abstentions, sorry, recusals by Supervisor Gregory and Petrosa. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It's not as fancy as the Tesla summon feature, but it's close. Thank you. Next, we're to conduct a public hearing on a proposed general plan amendment for our 23 through 31 housing element update. The Director of Planning, Building and Environmental Services requests that we hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to revise our general plan. And we have Mr. Hawks that will guide us through these changes. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll hear from Mr. Hawks.
Thank you Chair. Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, Trevor Hawks here. And I'm bringing to you, today's item is a request by staff for the board to adopt a resolution revising the housing element amendment of the Napa County General Plan for the six-cycle planning period, which is 2023 through 2031. This item represents ongoing efforts by the county to bring its housing element, the housing element of its general plan into compliance with state housing law, identify multifamily housing sites, and then also to affirmatively further fair housing. Before I get going further with this presentation, I'd just like to introduce members of our housing element updates team, including staff and our consultants. I'm here with Matt Coda, who's our principal consultant on the item with BAE. And then behind me, we have Silver Darbignan, who's our in-house counsel. Barbara Kouts with Goldfarb is joining us virtually, as well as Beverly Choi with ESA. And then we also have Director Bordona and Planning Manager Michael Parker. Now, go ahead, next one. So, just to kind of go back through, you know, quick rundown of what we've brought to the board previously, you know, this represents, you know, a continuing effort of staff to update the housing element as far back as 2021. Technically, I think there's two other items that should be on this history where the board went ahead and instructed staff to begin working on the housing element and approved a contract with our principal consultants and subconsultants on this item. But as far back as 2021, the Board of Supervisors also appointed a 13-member Housing Element Advisory Committee and adopted bylaws for them. And in late 2021, also held a discussion, a public meeting to provide direction to staff on the percentage of the county's six-cycle RINA transfer to the cities and the selection criteria for multifamily housing sites. In the summer of 2022, we held a public meeting to discuss staff's initial drafting, initial draft of the housing sites inventory and provide direction to staff on the housing element update. And then finally, the last time we were here before the board was January 24th, 2023, when the board held a public hearing on resolutions to adopt the final draft housing element update and certification of the final environmental impact report. Go ahead. So, at that January 24th, 2023 meeting, the board adopted a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report and adopted findings under the California Environmental Quality Act for the housing and safety element amendments to the Napa County General Plan. You also adopted a resolution replacing the existing 2014 housing element with the updated housing element amendment to the general plan for the period of 2023 to 2031, with the final sites inventory revised to exclude the Bishop and Ultamira site. When we brought that item to you on January 24th, we had at the time five sites in our draft housing element. It was the Bishop site, the Ultamira site, Spanish Flat, Imola and Foster Road. The Planning Commission had adopted a resolution recommending to the board that they adopt the housing element, but revise it to exclude the Bishop site. In the time period between that Planning Commission meeting and us coming to the board, the Ultamira site also contacted staff and asked that they be removed from the housing element as well. So the board went ahead and agreed with that, and that's the element that we adopted. And then going a little bit out of order, I'll talk about what happened in between that and what we just had two weeks ago with the Planning Commission. But we have brought these revisions to the Planning Commission on December 6th. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the revisions, including those within a change memo that we brought to the Planning Commission to the 2023-2031 housing element responding to HCD's comments. So if I can go on, go ahead and go to the next slide? Thank you. So, the board adopted the housing element on January 24th, 2023. Staff, and they were, instructed staff to remove the Bishop and Ultamira sites. Staff went ahead and went through that, you know, making, removing those from the element took a little bit of time. There's kind of like a butterfly effect in how that impacts the narrative and the document. But we got the adopted housing element off to HCD on March 1st, 2023. On April 27th, 2023, we received from HCD a Housing Element Compliance Letter that's contained in the staff packet as attachment D. And HCD found, had reviewed the adopted housing element, and they found that it addresses most statutory requirements described in their November 7th, 2020 review letter. However, additional revisions are necessary to substantially comply with state housing element law. So, from that time, since then to the December 6th meeting, staff has been working to revise the housing element in order to bring us into compliance with state housing law. This has been a collaborative process. You know, staff and our consultants have been working on this, but we've also worked with the Napa-Sonoma Collaborative, our regional planning bench there, to kind of identify what edits and revisions we need to make to the housing element to bring it into compliance, as well as about half a dozen meetings with HCD to kind of understand fully what they were looking for in their April 27th, 2023 compliance letter. If you look at attachment E in the staff packet, that's gonna be the revision matrix. You're going to have, essentially, if you look at the compliance letter in attachment D, we've taken each individual comment from HCD there, I think there were about 18 of them, and we've put those in separate rows of a matrix. Then you have the second column, which is a summary of revisions to the housing element update based on HCD's letter and technical assistance meetings. And then the third column is pages where the revisions can be found in the redline copy of the document, which is attachment B. So, the first column is referencing comments as they were given to us from our revised copy, I'm sorry, our adopted copy that we sent to HCD. And then column, the second and third column are referring to the redline copy in attachment B of the staff packet. So, let's go, go ahead and, next slide please. So, you're gonna look through this, you can look through the revision matrix to see what we've revised, where it is in the document. I'll talk a little bit about a summary, the summary of changes that we've made to the document that we are presenting today to the Board of Supervisors and requesting that you adopt. You're gonna see in this revision, an expanded assessment of fair housing to include comparisons to the Bay Area region. We've identified common locations of homeless encampment activity in the unincorporated county, and we've added narrative concerning homeless needs. We've modified program H3K to address incorporation of the fall 2023 homeless count into the farmworker housing study. And we've added geographic targeting for housing rehabilitation to programs H1A and H1B. If you go throughout the document, you're gonna see added maps and text to discuss housing sites in relation to median income, disability, familiar status, overcrowding, overpayment. We've added discussion of local affordability housing programs, ramifications of low-density zoning, redlining, employer locations to relation to housing locations. We've added a farmworker needs, we've added farmworker needs information from the, a Napa-Sonoma Collaborative Equity Working Group study session, as well as a UC Merced study on farmworker needs. And we've discussed additional potential environmental constraints with the remaining housing sites in the housing sites inventory. Next slide please. This revision has, we've modified programs in this, but you're also gonna notice that we've added four programs to the Goals, Policies and Programs section of this amendment. Two of those, H4M and H4N, set timelines for annexation of the Foster Road site and preparation of the Imola site. We've also modified program H4G to include timelines for subdivision of large sites. One of the specifications for HCD is that sites for multifamily housing have to be 10 acres or less. And so, some of our sites that were bigger than that, we've set basically timelines that lay out separate dates that will get that subdivision complete. We've modified program H5F to include removal of the CUP requirement for the AHCD zoning district, a commitment from the county to allow group homes of seven or more persons in all. in all zones allowing residential uses, and a July 2024 deadline to complete community stakeholder outreach on multifamily development constraints. Two of the other new programs that you're going to see in there, we've added program H6C to provide additional place-based strategies to improve access to opportunities for lower-income areas. We've added program H6D to provide mobility strategies to improve access for lower-income households to higher resource areas. And then overall, throughout the programs, you'll notice that we've, in some places, pushed back dates to provide more time to complete programs that were due within the first year of adoption. And then finally, the board may remember that we brought the, an update to the Napa County Safety Element this last summer, and we've also done additional revisions to address ongoing changes to fire hazard severity zone maps issued by the Board of Forestry last summer. Next slide, please. Just to talk a little bit quickly about the change memo, so we, the notice of public hearing for the Planning Commission went out on November 24th. And pretty soon after that, we did receive communication from the representatives of Foster Road site, asking if some changes could be made to better address the original intent of the annexation agreement between the county, the city, and the property owner. So, we looked that over, and before we got to the Planning Commission meeting, we went ahead and made revisions to language both in the annexation program and in the narrative of the document to reflect this. Those changes are, you can find them in the change memo that we took to the Planning Commission, which is attachment F. We also substituted out text, the original text of objective H2D between the time that we posted the document and the Planning Commission, just because we felt that the new text better reflected staff's original intent with this revision to the objective. And then the very small minor item, we added missing red lines to the 14th bullet point under objective H5F. Those were described correctly, but we just had missed the underlying strikeouts in the redline documents, so we made sure that that was in the change memo as well. The Planning Commission on December 6th, 2023, adopted a resolution recommending to the Board of Supervisors to adopt these revisions and the change memo. So, there's no difference between the attachments B and C, which is the redline document in the clean housing element that you have before you today. While I've put the change memo in there, we've, since the Planning Commission incorporated those edits into attachments B and C, so everything is current to what we are requesting the board adopt today. Next slide. So, the following options are available to the Board of Supervisors as it reviews the revisions to the adopted six-cycle housing element. Staff's recommendation is that the board may adopt a resolution incorporating all revisions prepared by staff today. The board may also, in adopting a resolution, direct staff to make any modifications, additions, or removal of any of the revisions prepared by staff. And we are requesting that the board also direct staff to make any non-substantive changes in preparation of the submission, the final draft to HCD. I think when we're done here today, we're going to make one last go over to just make sure we have all, you know, grammar is perfect, spelling is perfect, things like that. So, if you catch any of that, you can let me know, but we're going to do one more quick run-through of it. So, that does it for my presentation today. As I mentioned, you have the staff and consultant team that have helped prepare this item for you today, where we can answer any questions that you may have. And that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Certainly, we know how much work goes into preparing this item, but then having to bring it back another time is certainly is more than double the work. So, thank you very much to everyone involved in preparing this item before us. Any questions from the board? I don't see any right now. I think you can say it's been vetted and vetted again.
That's good. I'm happy with that.
Supervisor Katrelle.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would echo my thanks, and I appreciate the change matrix, or the matrix that sets it out. That's a really helpful way, rather than scrolling through pages and pages. So, thank you for that, that quick fix. And I know this has been a long process. I was looking at the thing that went to Planning Commission, and specifically the objective H5F modifying the zoning code to remove the CUP requirement for residential care facilities. And I bring this up because at a recent RCRC meeting, one of the other county reps was talking about residential care homes coming into neighborhoods and not requiring the CUP. So, that, so I just want to clarify that that's something that the state is asking us to do, that, to remove that conditional use permit process from those residential homes. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a requirement of state law.
And is that recent? I mean, can you give us a little background on when that has come about?
I can't tell you exactly. I would say it's, it's been in the last several years, certainly since the last housing element, the prior, the fifth-cycle housing element was adopted. So, we're just kind of creating additional requirements for jurisdictions to accommodate the group homes, and literally, that's what is needed in order to comply with the state law.
Got it. So, it needs to be in our housing element update to comply with state law? And I think I just bring it up because it's, I think, useful for the community to understand that this is something that is now part of the fabric of our housing element. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from the board, I'll open public comment first in the boardroom.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Howard Siegel speaking on behalf of the Napa Housing Coalition. First, I'd like to congratulate the entire county team for running the gauntlet of HCD and this process. As someone who was involved in the last three or maybe even four of those cycles, I know how challenging that can be, although it sounds like this one was more challenging than most. One thing I would also like to say is to compliment the board from a previous meeting, agenda item, the in-at-the-Abbey Hotel proposal, I believe, the previous meeting, where the housing issue was front and center, and I know all of you felt fairly strongly about the mitigation for that being revisited above and beyond what had been proposed by the applicant. And in that same vein, I did take note of the, of the program and objective and action item to do a new nexus study and to update the ordinance accordingly for mitigated housing sites as, units, as well as the upgrading the in-lu fee. And I think the latter is particularly important. I note that the, the deadline that's been proposed in that program is December of 2025, which is probably realistic, but then, at that point, based on what I read in the element, it will be, have been 16 years since the last update. And, and given, especially in recent years, the change in construction cost, the, I think the frequency should be revisited much more frequently than once every 16 years. I would say at the very least, once every housing cycle, namely eight years or maybe even five years would be more appropriate. The, at that last meeting, I believe, was Supervisor Gallagher, who pointed out, even though the applicant was proposing a mitigation fee that might have been, I don't know, maybe three times what was required, the, the truth of the matter is that was going to maybe build three units at best. So, that sort of speaks to how woefully inadequate that fee is and has been for a long time. So, I would just, again, thank you, thank the board, and thank the staff and consultant team for doing a great job, and hopefully you will take that one item into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public comment.
Hola, buenas dias a todos, apreciable supervisores. Mi nombre es Esbeidi Piña. También agradezco a Trevor y a su equipo de trabajo, el gran trabajo que han desarrollado en este proyecto de ocho años de vivienda, el que nos ha incluido y siempre trate de tenerme a mí un traductor ya que el inglés para mí es algo complicado.
Hello, my, my name is Ms. Peña. Thank you very much for this process and this long eight years of work, and thank you for having a translator, since English is not my first language.
Yo fui una familia, mi familia fuimos una familia sin hogar debido a que los altos costos en Napa no están siendo regulados y pienso que ese es un trabajo que les agradecería a ustedes que en cada uno de sus distritos o en conjunto lo trabajaran y en colaboración yo puedo apoyarlo si es necesario con mi testimonio, ya que los costos en Napa, las familias que trabajamos en la agricultura o restaurantes o los trabajadores esenciales, muchas veces no calificamos para este tipo de vivienda porque nos piden comprobar que ganamos tres veces el monto de la renta de Napa. Y es triste ver migrar a familias que tienen aquí en Napa y que trabajan aquí en Napa por más de 20 años y migraron por los altos costos.
And I would like to let you know that families like myself are without a home because the prices are too high. What we need is to work with you, and I'm happy to work in your district on, on this. It's unfortunate that many times ag workers don't qualify, that they say that we earn three times as much to qualify for subsidized housing, but many families who've been living here for 20-plus years are no longer able to live, continue to live in Napa.
Que hubiera también alguna agencia o institución que regulara los porcentajes que deben de subir también los propietarios de las viviendas anualmente, ya que muchas veces no respetan el costo que es un 5% anual y muchas veces no suben hasta el 10% o el 15% y nosotros nos tenemos que adaptar a ese porcentaje porque no podemos calificar para otra cosa o es muy difícil para nosotros. Otra de los puntos que me gustaría que en este proceso se tomara en consideración es que las personas no paguen por una aplicación porque ahí hay mucha fuga de dinero. Por cada que vas y aplicas a una vivienda te cobran entre alrededor de 40 a 60 dólares por persona mayor de 18 años y muchas veces no calificas y ese dinero pues lo estás perdiendo como familia.
There needs to be an agency that regulates property prices. Owners often charge more, otherwise owners are charging more than 10, 15, 20%. People often have to, in addition, pay for a rental application, and that could be over $40 each time, and it's also something of a, of a money-making grab.
Y ya por último, me gustaría también saber que hay más familias que les gustaría colaborar, que muchas veces nuestra barrera es el idioma, y que hubiera más espacios donde supieran ustedes los testimonios y la parte que es frustrante de un padre de familia, sacar a la familia adelante con estos costos que está teniendo la comunidad tan elevada, siendo que son pues parte esencial y todos somos contribuyentes de, del condado de Napa, ¿no? Gracias.
I'd like to let you know that there's others like myself who would like to collaborate, that the costs are a big contributor, and that the costs are a big contributor to many of us having to, having to leave, and many of us do contribute to Napa County, and we'd like to work with you on the issue.
Muchísimas gracias. Are there any other public comment on this item? We are on item 13B. Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll change over to the phone lines. And there's no one on the line. I'll bring it, close public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion and decision, just to reiterate to our staff our many thanks for all the work that went into, hopefully, pleasing HCD. Last item of the year, guys. Let's go.
No, I just wanted to acknowledge Trevor and the team, but Trevor in particular. This is a super important item, not only for our department but for the county. A lot of work has gone into this, and Trevor has been a rising star for some time, and he continues to do so, and I'm super, it's, it's fun to watch Trevor and watch Trevor grow in his role as he continues to move up through the county. But special thanks to the whole team, Silva as well, and everybody that's zooming in. Anyway, just want to say thanks to Trevor.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate it. Doesn't go unnoticed. Supervisor Gregory.
Well, I was just going to request that you two stick around long enough to do the next one. It's going to be even harder as we go along.
Yeah. The seventh is going to be difficult.
Yeah.
I think everyone's going to.
Was that a commitment?
Yeah. Let's get there first. Let's get the action items done first.
All right. I'll move approval of the item, staff's recommendation.
I, thank you. I have a motion second. Supervisor Katrelle?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, but also thank you to Ms. Peña, and I think one of the things about the next one coming down the pipe is, I think we can look back and learn a lot from how the past process went and how we could improve it, and it's great to have folks come to speak and say, hey, I want to participate in the process and, and look for solutions. So, I'm hoping that we can find a place for Ms. Peña to participate too, and thanks again, Trevor. I know it's been a ton of work. Thanks.
I, I do think it is excellent timing to have the, someone willing to be able to, to speak with us on really what comes down to tenant protections, which actually is part of the incorporated funds for the BAFA Housing Bond Measure that's coming our way. Solo que le decimos, señora Peña, si por favor se mantiene involucrada aquí en el proceso porque sabemos que va a haber fondos que van a venir hacia el condado de Napa que va a tener protecciones para los inquilinos aquí en Napa.
Si, de hecho, una de las cosas que mencioné es que si me gustaría que me consideraran, si llegan a necesidad, el señor Trevor tiene mi correo personal donde me ha dado la oportunidad de estar en contacto con él.
Muchas gracias. She did say that she is in contact with Mr. Hawks, and you have her email, and we can continue this, this dialogue. Thank you. With that, I have a motion by Supervisor Gregory, a second by Supervisor Pedroza for adoption of the resolution revising the general plan housing element for 2023 through 2031. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That is your last action item of the year, board, and we do not have any closed session that has been removed, continued to a later date. At this time, we are adjourned to, and I will just ask, I believe we do have a special meeting. Are we for January 8th? And so, I would just ask for confirmation of that? From our CEO?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. So, at this time, we will adjourn to the Board of Supervisors a special meeting on January 8th with the next regular meeting to come on Tuesday, January 9th. And it has been a pleasure to serve as chair, and we are done.